Okay, team. It is 6:30 and you know what that means. All right, welcome. I'm going to call this meeting to order. So the first item of business is to review and approve the agenda. So I think we have one item to pull which is the zoning fix.
Zoning fixes, correct.
Which is item seven.
Postpone that until the next meeting.
Are there any other changes to the agenda? Okay, so we'll consider the agenda approved without objection. And so the next item is general business and appearances which is a time for anyone from the public to address the city council on any issue that is otherwise not on our agenda. And I'm going to take a privilege of going first which is to say that I want to just take a minute and recognize this is our first regular council meeting since the passing of Nancy Sherman and Sergeant Jennings. And so I just want to recognize their great service to the city of Montpelier. I'm very thankful for them. So that's...
Thank you.
Yes, for sure. All right, so if there is any member of the public who would like to address the council on any other item, otherwise not on our agenda. And if, and this is true for other things when you come up to comment, if you would say your name and where you're from and try to keep your comments to two minutes or less so we can keep the conversation going. Okay, we're going to keep going then. Okay, so the next item is consideration of the consent agenda. Do we have a motion regarding that?
I will. I'll say it.
Okay. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so our first regular business item is the Riverfront Access presentation. So I'm going to invite all of those who are part of that to come on up to the front table and I'm going to move and I'm going to turn it over to you.
Great.
Okay. Would you all mind saying your names before you start?
Do you want us to say our names now?
You wouldn't.
Sure. Riccarda Erickson with the Vermont River Conservancy.
Regina Leonard with Landscape Architect with Mylona McBrum.
Your voices are not being picked up by the mic so I'm going to ask you to go back so everybody can hear your names. Thank you.
Riccarda Erickson with the Vermont River Conservancy.
And I'm Regina Leonard with Mylona McBrum.
Steve Libby with the Vermont River Conservancy.
Roy Schiff with Mylona McBrum.
Well, thank you for this opportunity to present to you this evening. We've introduced ourselves and I wanted to give you a little bit of history of kind of where we got, how we got to this point. And going back to the August 22nd city council meeting, we came before you. You authorized us to do a conceptual design and feasibility study for the newly designated Confluence Park at the point where the North Branch River comes into the main stem of the Winuski River on the city-owned Transit Center property. And we then immediately put out an RFP and hired Mylona McBrum to do these conceptual designs and feasibility study with us. We also gathered an advisory committee of 17 people from diverse professions throughout Vermont and we held three public meetings to get public input as to what was important to people when considering the design for this Confluence Park. We now have three design concepts and a feasibility study to present to you tonight. We are not asking you to choose which one of the three is your favorite. We're not going to be voting on that tonight but they are meant to show you what is possible at this place, what is possible for a Confluence Park. And we would like to ask you for a commitment moving forward to authorize the Vermont River Conservancy to work with the Montpelier Parks Department and any other applicable city offices to further develop a design for the Confluence Park and to move ahead towards realizing this vision of a Confluence Park here. And we all know that a lot has changed since August 22nd in Vermont, I mean, sorry, in Montpelier, especially in this particular area. There's a lot of projects, new projects happening, new development. And I want to just briefly address that when we are referring to the Confluence Park tonight, we may refer to it as the Confluence Park West. And that is because it's on the west side of the North Branch River. Throughout the four months, an opportunity came to the table to look at the Moat Lot which is on the east side of the North Branch River. And the city is now thinking about other opportunities moving ahead with that lot and VRC is happy to serve on a committee to look at different options. And internally, we refer to that lot, the Moat Lot, as Confluence Park East. It's not going to be part of the conceptual design tonight because we know it's very early on in that phase of thinking and it's not necessarily on the table as a viable option at this point. But when we, but we do hold it in a broader vision of what could be. And so we will refer to that a little bit tonight, the Confluence Park East. But know that what we are presenting to you tonight, the conceptual designs, are for the Confluence Park West. And I would like to, at this point, hand it over to Regina to continue the presentation.
Great. I'm going to put my glasses on so you see what I'm doing. Thank you for the opportunity to present these ideas to you tonight. And I just wanted to give you a little background, a little context. And Riccarda talked a little bit about the project and how it came to be. And what I want to talk to you about is just some of the considerations that we had, we looked at as moving the concepts forward. Really, the ultimate goal is to create a riverfront park for the community. And so some of the considerations are river access and accessibility. So trying to appeal to multiple users and users of all abilities to create new recreation opportunities, especially on the river, to think about flood resilience, to consider the context of the park to the downtown and to the city and to the city's history. And to think about this area as a public space and what it could be and how it could serve the community. And then finally, how to integrate the bike path. There's a lot of different ways to do it and I'll walk you through some of those tonight. And then just the other piece of this is thinking about Confluence East on the other side and I'll talk a little bit about that further on. But it's really looking at those opportunities to knit those together, those spaces. So all of those things that I just mentioned, those design considerations, were really project objectives that had been guided and then reinforced through community outreach. So all of these were really guided by the public input that came even prior to this project with the many sort of input sessions and community sessions that you've held with the Taylor Street Lot and the Carr Lot, but then also the Vermont River Conservancy and the public meetings that they conducted as part of this project. So they met three times and had an opportunity to hear some of the public input. And these are just some of the themes and you see that they really mirror some of the design considerations. River access, a balance of uses, looking at recreational opportunities, a boat launch, thinking about the environmental components, whitewater opportunities, fishing. And then sitting areas, trees and vegetation, different levels from which to view the river and the landscape, shelters and picnic tables, year-round usability, maybe opportunities for play. There was a lot of ideas. People wanted to incorporate history if possible, maybe pay some homage to the Native American ancestry on the site or in the city. And then think about views both of the river and back to the capital and general beautification opportunities for public art. So a lot of input and a lot of great ideas and things that we considered moving the concepts forward. I'm just going to give you a little bit of background on the site. There are some historic preservation considerations. This is in the Montpelier Historic District and so we have to be considerate of historic character and the context. There's potential archaeological resources on the site and including the retaining walls that are there that date back to the 19th century and there may be some underground archaeological resources that might come up in the future as this park is developed. And generally, the treatment of historic landscapes kind of follows the Secretary of the Interior's standards. It's the National Park Service. And they generally require review and approval at the state level, sometimes a local level as well. Safety and access considerations. Obviously, you have a very steep site and you have shoreline access. If that's something that you want to achieve, you have to be consider that there is a 17-foot elevation change. You have a channelized slope with structures. And just for a point of reference, universal access, if we were to try to get people all the way down to the river would require 240 linear feet of ramp. So that was one of the things we explored and we looked at, the extent of universal access. And then how to integrate the bike path. The bike path goes through the east, the West Confluence Site, kind of breaks it in two. And so we looked at different ways to integrate the bike path. And then finally, the railroad. You have a railroad right-of-way that borders one part of the property and so managing public access points around that railroad is something to consider. And then there are the environmental considerations. This is in a special flood hazard area. It's, the whole downtown, in fact, is in the 100-year flood plain. And so we have to think about flood resiliency, opportunities for improving flood capacity perhaps, but also just looking at how things are constructed and the design proposal and making sure that it's resilient to flooding. Repairing vegetation. Because this is sort of a man-made environment, there's not a lot of high-value vegetation out there now, but a project of this scope presents a great opportunity to improve the habitat and repairing vegetation in the area and along the river. And then finally, site remediation. This is a site that has had known contamination and so it's been cleaned up and so any further impacts would need to go through a permitting process. So those are all some of the considerations. And then finally, if you look down at the bottom of the screen, we have the proposed, let me see if I can do this. All right. I'm not good with the track mouse. I probably won't do this a lot because it'll drive everybody crazy. But we have the proposed West Confluence Site that you can see and then the proposed East Confluence Site. And then all the green areas denote sort of public open spaces within the downtown or within walking distance of the downtown. And these are all connected by the proposed bike path and the Central Vermont Recreation Pass and the Cross Vermont Trail. And so one of the reasons that I mentioned this is that this area, as Riccarda mentioned, is going through an incredible transformation. And so you have the Transit Center, you have the Confluence, what we're calling Confluence West. You have, and this is, you know, a maybe, but you have other amenities that are in flex right now, like the parking garage perhaps. You have Confluence East and that parcel that's open for development or redevelopment. And then you have river restoration and access and that's something that I'll talk a little bit about further on because we also have been looking at ways to restore the river. So these all, all open up opportunities to really capitalize on the full potential of this area to face the river. You have all this development happening and what a great opportunity to really have that development orient itself toward the river so that you have connected public spaces and unify, with a unified design language and great access to the river. So with that, I'm just going to get into the conceptual design. I'm going to show you really three concepts and they all achieve something a little bit different. So I'm going to stay rather high-level tonight, but certainly if you have questions, feel free to ask. So again, the considerations as we approach this is river access, accessibility, recreational opportunities, flood storage and resiliency, context and history, what is the quality of the public space and then the integration of the shared use path. So the first concept, we're calling this the Performance Park. And really, these are just themes so that you understand each of these achieves something a little bit better than some of the other concepts. What this concept does is it incorporates the bike path but it expands the space and envelops the bike path on either side. So it utilizes the existing sort of graded flat area to the absolute maximum. And what that does is that allows a larger public space so that then you can accommodate small concerts and community events. So you'll see that this, this features, this concept features a performance pavilion with seating along the front so that you can sit there and eat your lunch on a nice summer day. Again, it integrates the bike path without interruption and it creates a large accessible overlook. So I'm going to talk a lot about the overlooks. And this area right here in all of the concepts is one of the spots for an overlook. And it's just a perfect spot. It sits a little bit down. It has this great view and it has the historic walls. And so this one has a large accessible overlook and it provides some access. So there's accessibility to that large overlook. And then the river access for fishing and a boat launch. It's a little bit steeper because we've maximized the space at the top of the site. And I'll just show you a couple of section elevations. So if you look down at the image on the lower left of the screen, you see the dash red line. That shows you how we've cut the section and which way, the arrows show which way we're facing, just to help you orient. So this shows kind of a line with a section of the pavilion and then you can see the seating at the front of the pavilion and then a little bit of a path space. And a lot of the plantings kind of create opportunities for seating. So we berm those up and we have stone seating and it provides a little bit of pedestrian scale. And then the bike path, you can see how that's sort of integrated in the space. And then a stabilized slope with plantings and seating opportunities and then a path and access down by the river. This one, I'll just, I know this is going to get tiresome looking at all of these. Yeah, so if you look at your handouts and all of you, if you want to download these at a later date, you can just take a look at how these spaces are divided.
Where are these going to be available? Are you, you're going to send us all?
We'll send you the materials. In fact, I have a drive I can give you tonight.
That would be great.
Yes, you can post them. So in this one, it just gives you a sense of that multi-use plaza space. It cuts between it and then the tiered pathways down to the river's edge. So the next concept, we call the Riverine Park. It's pop, oh, did I skip one? Okay, I'll go back to it. Sorry.
The Plan B for being...
I don't know how I did that. Okay, there we go. So the next concept is what we call Heritage Park. And the reason that we were calling this Heritage Park is that this is really, one of the things that we heard from people is that they really wanted us to pay tribute to the Native American culture. And so this one is really crafted on sort of the concept of a medicine wheel. And so you have access on the north, south, east and west. If you look at the handouts, you can have a little bit more of a description of them, but the idea here is that it's this great opportunity for interpretation. And you have east, west, north and south. They're all representative of different seasons and there's a whole host of interpretive information that you learn a lot about culture. And there are spirit, spirit animals with each of these directions and so those will be featured as figurines in the garden space. So this great opportunity for public art and interpretation. So this features a central plaza. So the big idea in this is that in this scheme, the bike path sort of gets integrated and absorbed by this really vibrant energetic public space. And there's seating along the middle, a raised planted area with a central element like a totem or something that's really exciting and visually exciting to look at. Seating along the edge. And then the overlook is accessed, it's flush with the plaza and it's accessed by a shelter, so just a small little shelter. So it has this niche little lawn space which would be really cool. And then this concept also provides two accessible overlooks and a fishing platform. So if you, if you look, let me see if I can get us there. So we have this, this overlook and then we've got one at the top of the site right here and then a fishing platform here. So in this one, you can see there's a lot of ramp, but because we structured the ramps with walls, we're able to make the most out of the space, compress it and get people down to a fishing platform so people can fish in the river. And there's also access down via paths as well and stepping stones. And again, on this one, just to look through the site, you can see the different levels. On this one, again, you're cutting through the plaza. And then the last...
Should be conscious of the time.
Yeah, sorry. The last concept is the Riverine Pocket Part.
I just want to double-check. The first one that I got says...
Ashley, can you use your microphone? Sorry, the first one that I got says Concept C and I got a second version that says Concept C.
Yeah, one of them has the river as for context. The other one is, has the concept just a little bit bigger if you wanted to see some of the details.
You should have A, B and C.
We got two Cs. I have an A. I have two Cs.
I haven't seen them.
Yeah, I don't have an A.
Oh, interesting. Well, it's basically what's up on the screen and it's the two versions of the same view.
So then this final scheme is really the idea of creating a separate area for the bike path and creating more of a riverine experience. This is a more linear park and it is a sloped park, but it does feature two accessible overlooks and a fishing platform. It provides river access for fishing and a boat launch. And you can see that the bike path goes through and then the amenities for the bike path or the multi-use path are on the left-hand side or sort of on the north side of the trail. So you have an opportunity to put your bikes away if you want to go down and explore the park. So this is a much more of a linear experience, but it's also much more private and the spaces are smaller, more of a niche experience. And that's just has to do with the fact that we're putting a lot of program in a really sloped, small space. So I won't, because of the time, get into these, but you can take a look and see. And then finally, the other thing we looked at is we looked at sort of the breakdown of cost or what, you know, what do these concepts represent in terms of potential budgets? And so what we did is we did a cost breakdown and you can see here that just for your purposes, we looked at earthwork and construction. That's about a quarter of the budget right there. Retaining walls and paths, another, you know, 20% or so. And then amenities, bike racks, seating, all the things that helped to make the place the place is another quarter of the budget. And the rest kind of gets divided out between some of the features, design and permitting, stormwater, things like that. And then I'm not going to spend any time on this, but the other piece of this is you're investing in river access and creating these wonderful places to get to the river. Having a river that's clean and safe for swimming and fishing and exciting for boating opportunities, that's all part of the strategy as well. So we have been looking at that and we do have, I think, a slide that addresses that. So I think that's it for us and I just have, Riccarda will wrap it up.
Yep, I just want to do a two-minute wrap-up. So the confluence is a point where two or more rivers merge and become one. The water of one river is not lost at a confluence, as is the case with the North Branch here whose water mingles with the Winuski and eventually flows into our Great Lake Champlain. And confluence is a word that could apply to our city as well. As the capital city and located in the center of the state, Montpelier is a merging point for the people of Vermont. So here, this picture is the Confluence Park this past November. Let's consider this the before picture. We have the opportunity now to define the after picture. Like the rivers that flow along its shores, imagine a place for people to come together from all walks of life, for the residents of the Transit Center in the French Block to sit in their backyard alongside a legislator on her lunch break, for a high school student to pause for a moment as he walks along the multi-use path on his way home from school, for a grandparent to sit with a grandchild on the river's edge looking for hare and otter or pileated woodpeckers, for visitors staying at the hotel to stop and enjoy our riverside park before heading out to our shops and restaurants, an angler casting a line for a wild trout, a kayaker paddling waters that will take her to Waterbury. Through our public outreach, we have heard resounding support for the Confluence Park. You, this city council, has the opportunity to be a critical part of transforming our Confluence Park into an after picture that is vibrant with a diversity of people enjoying the many amenities and opportunities provided by a riverside park. The after picture could be that of a small parcel that created a huge transformation for our city where the human landscape mimics the merging of rivers, a confluence that brings together people as one community. Thank you.
There we go. Well, thank you. It's very exciting. So, dear council and public, I know it's going to be very tempting to comment on these designs right now, but that is not the point. Right? So I have thoughts that I want to share with you, but I'm going to save that for another time because I think the point right now is are we going to continue to support your process? And I'm going to open it up to councilors first and then the public and then we'll see if there's a motion. Any comments from the city council? Yeah, go ahead, Ashley.
I guess I'm sort of curious what kinds of resources the city would be expected to bring to the table?
Yep, so we...
Resources?
Resources, yes.
And not just like money, but like people's time and like what that looks like?
We envision a process moving forward that is collaborative and it would be the Vermont River Conservancy working alongside the Parks Department and any other applicable city commissions or offices and to define what, what that separation or shared resource is. So I think that is...
Well, thank you. It's very exciting. So, dear council and public, I know it's going to be very tempting to comment on these designs right now, but that is not the point. Right? So, I have thoughts that I want to share with you, but I'm going to save that for another time, because I think the point right now is, are we going to continue to support your process? And I'm going to open it up to councillors first and then, the public, and then, we'll see if there's a motion. Any comments from city council? Yeah, go ahead, Ashley.
I guess I'm sort of curious, what kinds of resources the city would be expected to bring to the table?
Yep, so, we...
Resources?
Resources, yes.
And not just like money, but like people's time and like what that looks like?
We envision a process moving forward that is collaborative, and it would be the Vermont River Conservancy working alongside the Parks Department and any other applicable city commissions or offices. And to define what that separation or shared resource is. So, I think that is to be determined. I think that what Vermont River Conservancy would bring to the table is our experience working on river restoration and public access, and also, our ability to seek funding sources. So, that's the level of collaboration and resources that I think we know at this time, but we are open to what plan might develop.
Yeah, good.
I just, I, this is maybe, we're going to have a budget discussion later. I'm just, I support this, and I think I would love the city to be at the table. I'm just a little concerned about like how we're spreading resources out on the Parks side of things. And I also, I noticed you said city offices. Does that include like other shareholders that are active in the area, like other organizations that are doing work? Like, we had this sustainable Montpelier piece. Or is it like everyone who's involved in this sort of city design and development that's invited, or is it just...
Yes, we're happy to collaborate. Trust for Public Land would be a great resource to collaborate with.
Other comments? Donna?
Well, I definitely support the city getting involved, and maybe we need Bill and the staff to give us feedback to estimate time and what they can handle. But I'm assuming they can say, yes, we can, or yes, we can't, anytime you need something. And we'll just keep track of it, I guess, is how I feel as far as staff allotment. And both of you, you did such a great job of explaining what could be very confusing up there. So, thank you. It was well done. I really appreciate your work.
Other comments? Glenn?
I just want to say thank you also. I think that all three of these designs look great to me, so I'm really looking forward to the next steps. And in that direction, I just want to follow up and ask, again, where online the public might be able to find these images, and when the next step is going to happen?
Yeah, we'd be happy to share them for, if the city wants to put them up on the city website, we can put them on the Vermont River Conservancy website. We haven't put, this is the first unveiling of the concept, so they aren't currently available, but as soon as tomorrow morning, we can get them up.
But next time, you're going to share this with us ahead of time, right? Yes, great, okay.
And, sorry, and then, what exactly is the next step, and when would that next meeting be, if it's a public meeting?
To be determined, yeah. Open, yeah.
Comments from the public? Go ahead.
Looking at the comments that I should give. My name is Katie Michaels, and I live in Montpelier, and I'm on the Montpelier Conservation Commission. And I just wanted to share on behalf of the commission how excited we are about this project, and how excited we are for the possibility of increased public access and connection. I think connection almost more than access to the river and acknowledgement of this thing that flows through our city. So, we're really excited to continue to be part of the advisory committee and support the project. And thanks to BRC for your leadership.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Bob Hines. I live in Montpelier, and I've spent a fair amount of time in the river in this area. And I think it's a great idea, but I think this part's got to be part of an overall plan for how you're going to use the river. People are talking about taking out a number of dams. There's, from what I understand, proposed river access at Caledonia Spirits. And actually, I don't exactly know what the status of that is, but you have a great opportunity to come up with a plan on how you're going to use the whole river through Montpelier. And there's a great river access right behind Montpelier High School, which no one really knows about, but it's one of the best places to get in the river in that area. I mean, you've got people using, right below the dam on Pioneer Street, there's a big outcropping. People come down there and sunbathe. I mean, if you could take out some of the dams, you have a great access all the way from Barry, really, you know, down to Middlesex. So, I think you need to come up with a plan for what you're going to do with all of this. And also, things like the Wrightsville Dam is now under relicensing, and you want to get involved with that in terms of flows, and maybe some bottom releases to warm the water up in the winter and cool it down in the summer. I mean, there's a lot you can do, and this is just part of the whole plan, I think.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
That reminds me, Rosie Kruger, who is not here tonight, sent me an email and wanted to weigh in that we use this time to suggest to you all that there may be some possibility in tying some of these other access points together to Confluence Park, including the site, or the access, potential access point at Caledonia Spirits, at Old Country Club Road, which I think maybe you know about, as well as Timber Homes. Maybe there's a water trail, or some kind of theme in the signage, or some other kind of tie-in. So, anyway, I just want to put that out there. Other comments? Okay, so, is there a motion on table?
How do you want to state it?
You could refer to, I think you got an email from Ricardo that might have some language.
I have to go back to that, isn't it? Jack, if you have it, you go ahead.
I think I have it. I would move to continue the development of the Confluence River Park by authorizing the Vermont River Conservancy, Montpelier Parks Department, and other appropriate city offices to conduct more in-depth public process, refine plans, and collaborate on a fundraising plan. Skip a couple of things in there, but...
Second.
Okay, further discussion?
Does that have all the points that, I did find the agenda page, and it just brought up to study all the access issues and specific proposal to improve the newly approved Confluence Park area. Is that in there, Glenn? If it was, fine.
I think the language you read was from Ricardo's email, right?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I was reading the one off the agenda.
So, that should be fine, right?
Yes, I think that you were referring to the background information of what we had done until now.
Okay, good. Okay. All right, further discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Great.
Just toss in, if this is going to continue to be a city project, which I think is exciting, certainly, the staff would really like to make sure that some of our key folks are involved in your planning. I know Public Works in particular has some needs in that area for access of certain things, so much of whatever designs, or, you know, some of these, I think, might work with what they need and some might not. And just, you know, we want to make it as successful as possible. So, if you could include our folks in at the front end, that'd be great.
Okay, well, thank you so much for your work. It's very exciting. Okay, moving on to the second hearing of parking ordinance. So, this is, we made some changes the last time, so I'm going to open up the public hearing at this point, and start with council. Any comments for, any changes or anything on the parking ordinance as changed last time?
My impression is that it is where we want it to be, and I think we can move through this pretty quickly.
Fantastic. Would anybody like to, actually, any comments from the public on the parking ordinance?
Open the public hearing.
I did already. Okay, I'm going to, unless anybody wants to comment on the parking ordinance? Just making sure. Okay, great, great. We're going to close the public hearing. On that, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve all four ordinance as amended at the first hearing.
Second.
Wait, at the first, at the... You mean at the second hearing? Why? Because this is really the third hearing on this.
Oh, at the second hearing, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. In the second hearing...
From the last, from the last meeting.
Last meeting, okay.
Or, last time it was...
As proposed.
As proposed. There we go.
And a second?
Does that sound okay, Donna?
Yeah.
Okay, great, further discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, great, thank you. All right, the zoning fixes is off of our list, so now, we are up to the investment policy. So, I'm going to invite Terrence Field up to the table here. So, he's the chair of our investment committee.
Hi.
Hi. I don't know if you want to say anything about this, but...
Sure, I can say a few things. So, we've been working on this for a while. We're seeking approval of an amendment to the city's investment policy. We've been, for a while now, we've been talking about adding environmental, social, government restrictions almost to the policy, because it's been kind of wide open. We worked with the investment advisor that the committee works with to manage the portfolios that we manage for the city, and we came up with some language. I would call this kind of a first step. You know, we may go back and revisit this over time, but you've got to keep in mind that we, you know, we manage several portfolios, and most of them are fairly small. So, it's real difficult to achieve the level of diversification that you want in a very small portfolio. So, we've tried to, you know, stratify that in the language that we're putting in the policy, in terms of, you know, how we're going to manage portfolios less than $300,000 and portfolios greater than $300,000. So, language is in there, and I could try to answer the questions that you might have.
Well, I'm thrilled about this. I think it's great that we're taking these steps, and it's taken us some time to get to this point. And, yeah, any comments from council? I know, I know you, so Donna, do you have something?
No, I've read, so I could almost understand it, so good for you.
If I could take the liberty of adding a little bit of background here. So, one possibility for an investment strategy, given, you know, potential social responsibility restrictions, is, one possibility is you start from nothing, and you say, what are you going to invest in, and build up from zero. And the other way to do it is to start with, okay, if we're investing in more or less everything now, what are we going to take out of that, that we, you know, don't want to be a part of? And it just, particularly because of the size of our accounts, it turned out to be easier to do the second, to say, you know, we're invested in all of these things, and so, we're going to particularly not, as we can anyway, not invest in, you know, these certain types of things. And so, and then, the list is there. Okay, so, that, just for context, that's how we arrived at this point. So, I don't mean to, it's probably more detail than you really need.
I have a separate motion, but I think it's best if we consider this first and...
Fair enough.
And maybe tag on to that.
Okay, great, okay. So, is there any public comment on this, on the investment policy? Okay. And comments from council? Go ahead, Glenn.
Thank you. I almost could understand it too, so I appreciate that, like Donna. I would like to go in just a little bit closer to those tiers, because I think I understand the intent. Accounts with total value under $300,000 are relatively, you can do what you want with them because they're not big enough.
It's going to be very difficult to diversify at that level.
Right. And then, the, those accounts over $300,000, that last long sentence, "While the manager shall exclude direct investments in industry sectors identified in order to gain exposure to certain asset classes and so on, it may be necessary to purchase shares of mutual funds under ETFs that do have some exposure." So, can you just kind of expand on that a little bit to, so I understand, because I think I understand that you're, you have some freedom even with those larger accounts, but what exactly is the difference, I think, is what I'm trying to say? Could you restate it?
So, in a larger, you know, fund greater than $300,000, more likely, as it goes up in size, the investment advisor would have more flexibility to invest in individual securities.
Okay.
So, that gives them the flexibility to say, okay, we're not going to invest in, you know, Smith &amp; Browning or whatever. However, to still achieve the overall goal of that portfolio, there may need, there may be some value in adding a mutual fund or ETF. And when you get into those, you don't have a lot of say in terms of, unless you buy a particular sector mutual fund that says, okay, we're only going to, this mutual fund only invests in solar energy. But if we're trying to achieve diversification, you might get a fund that has some shares in ExxonMobil. It's not our intent, but it is our intent to diversify and meet the goal of the particular portfolio.
Did that help?
That sort of...
Okay, great. Don?
I thought of it as bundle services. Like, when you go to get cable TV, you get a certain bundle, and you're stuck with more things than you want, just to get a certain channel.
Right.
And so, your smaller mutials are bundled, and you can't separate them because they're so small.
Right. The mutual funds, they have, you know, obviously, certain directors, their objectives of that fund, and if that fits into one of our overall portfolios, we like what that fund is doing, but it may still be investing in one or two companies or something like that that don't fit what we're trying to do, but it, we don't feel that overall taints what we're trying to do.
Ashley?
So, I was just looking, I've been kind of thinking about this for a bit, and I was just looking at some other ESG policies from other entities and organizations. And one of the things that I am curious if we might be willing to explore is sort of having, having like a philosophy, like an investment philosophy as part of our policy. I always struggle, I think this came up when we were talking about charter changes as well. You know, I think that there, these are certainly fine starting points, I think, for things that, you know, we don't want to invest in. But I think that there are other things too, you know, human rights violations that may, you know, that may be being committed by certain companies that are invested elsewhere or doing business elsewhere. You know, I think public health and public safety, for example, you know, if, depending on what the city stance is, you know, about certain drug manufacturers, for example, or, you know, something like that, it strikes me that maybe having a guiding philosophy as well as, these are the things that we will absolutely, you know, not invest in, but also looking at sort of the, these other pieces as well, because we can say, sure, a hard no on the production or manufacture firearms and sale of firearms, but we're going to be okay with, you know, deforestation in an unsustainable way in some other country because the return is good for us. I mean, I guess I don't really see that as savvy financial stewardship, because it may benefit us, but it's kind of how I feel about coal use to generate electricity. That's great for those of us that don't have to live with the coal burning in our backyard. And so, I guess, I think this is a good starting point, but I'm looking for maybe like a guiding philosophy that gets incorporated into this, and finding a way to incorporate that into the ESG investment policy overall.
Fair enough. One of the things that we had gone back and forth about for a while there was, it would, I don't want to speak for the committee, but I think it would probably be safe to say that the committee may not want to be the ones that come up with that philosophy, because it is the council's philosophy and not the investment committee's philosophy. And they would, I think, not feel that it is their purview to do that. So, I mean, that's something that I think, you know, you or I or others on the council, like, we could potentially try to take a crack at that, and then...
Bring it back to the committee.
Yeah, bring it to the committee, and then, you know, vet that sort of, there would be a process around that, I think. But potentially, sure. Jack?
Hi, got a couple of questions. Are most of the city's accounts invested in mutual funds, or are they invested in individual stocks?
Most of the portfolios, I would say, are invested in mutual funds because they're fairly small. And we have one large, larger portfolio that does have individual securities.
And have you looked at the various SR mutual funds that are out there, like Calvert or whatever, to see how they comport with the standards that are proposed here?
We have not, the committee has not. That's something that we would talk to the investment advisor about. And we would, you know, we could ask them to do that and see how that fits in terms of the overall objective of that individual portfolio. Because we don't want to, what we don't want to do is go down a road where, yes, we may be complying, overly complying with this new aspect of the policy, but it may be to the detriment of the performance of the portfolio. So we have to weigh both of those.
Well, yeah, that actually brings up another question in my mind, which is, this is, all these funds are funds owned by the people of Montpelier, and we certainly have values that we want to uphold, but we also have an obligation to the residents of the city of taking care of their money and getting a good return for them on, on what we have invested.
And that, and that's what the committee weighed a lot in these discussions in terms of, all right, how much of this can we do? And at the same time, balance, you know, maintaining a fiduciary responsibility of, you know, of meeting the objective of that portfolio.
Thanks.
Sure.
Further comments? Okay, is there a motion?
I move that we approve the proposed policy.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, and Connor, go ahead.
So I have a separate motion. I think it's somewhat along the lines of what Ashley was saying when I read the policy today. It checked a lot of boxes for me with the, you know, firearms, tobacco, fossil fuels. I, I think there were some things missing in my mind that I wanted to see a delve deeper into. And I appreciated the chair saying this was a first step, right? Because I think we have a bit more work to do. Looked into Portland, Oregon, who passed an extremely comprehensive divestment policy just a few weeks ago, with a couple hundred people coming out and weighing in on it. And they talked about issues like, you know, do we want to support companies that are complicit with like a Trump border wall? Do we want to support private prisons? Do we want to support some of the atrocious actions that Israel's taken in the occupied territories? But a lot of these are quite subjective, right? The ones worth dealing with here are pretty straightforward. That said, I think it warrants some time looking into some of these other issues. I'd be happy to take part in that, but I think, just to send a motion to everybody looking, we're not done here. So I'd like to present this motion if I could read it. The city is committed to integrating environmental, social, and governance criteria into its investment considerations, including the considerations of environmental justice, labor rights, human rights, and good citizenship on the side of companies. The investment committee will consult with stakeholders and ESG experts to present the council with a plan for such integration. I don't feel the need to put a timeline on that right now. I hope we can have those conversations. But I, I think this motion is important, just to say that we're not done, and there will be a second step in this. So would appreciate the support.
I will second that. Donna.
I'm just a little confused. You were asking, your motion is asking the committee to do it. The committee said they prefer the council do it.
Right.
So I like the idea, but I still think it's the council's responsibility more than the committee. Would you accept an amendment?
Depends on what the amendment is.
That, instead of having the committee, being referred to the committee. Have the council do it.
I, I accept.
We can have a committee of the council.
I, I consider it a fairly amendment, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Is that, are you okay with that? Okay, so if, if we are going to continue to look into it, then it'll be some subgroup of us. That's, that sounds probably.
And bring us back some recommendations.
Okay.
We really shouldn't be telling you how to manage the money.
Okay. Great, that's fine with me. I'm gonna assume that there's some people who are up for doing that. You are. Ashley?
I think there's also another committee that would be happy to probably participate in that.
Oh, okay, great, super. I take it to me in the social and economic justice committee?
Why, yes.
Okay, great, fantastic. All right, so further conversation? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, great, so, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We just divested from fossil fuels.
Well, we're not making any new investments in fossil fuels. We're not divesting anything.
No, no, we aren't, that's what that was.
Shall avoid investing. Doesn't say divest though.
Yeah, anyway, we can talk more about that. All right, so moving on. Montpelier Community Fund and, and Arts Board, come on up. Welcome.
Start by complimenting the city manager and telling him to be here at 7:15, that was pretty close. Can I close this down?
Not my first meeting.
You don't need to use the projector or anything?
No.
Okay, great, yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you for having us. So we're the, we're three out of five, or three fets of the Montpelier Community Fund. Christine Zaki.
Ron Wild, Michael Sherman.
I'm the current chair of the Community Fund Board. And so we presented our recommendation to you and the materials for the council meeting, and wanted to come this evening to have an opportunity to present those recommendations, create some context around those recommendations, and answer any questions that you might have. Would it be acceptable, Mayor, if I just briefly walk through the memo?
Go for it, yeah, that's fine.
So we just wanted to, again, create some context, because we're extremely cognizant of the fact that these recommendations present a larger number than you've seen in years past. And so we want to talk about the reasons why. So the recommendations for this year total 133,253, $250. And so we wanted to talk a little bit about the context. Last year's Montpelier Community Fund grant making totaled 115,500. And then what we saw happen last year was that there were three nonprofit ballot requests that went onto the ballot. So there were three nonprofits who had previously applied pretty regularly to the board that, that did not apply last year and applied to the ballot. And so those three recommendations totaled $26,000. So if you add our 115,500 that went out the door through this Montpelier Community Fund competitive grant making process, and then that $26,000 that went onto the ballot and was approved by our generous citizen members, citizens, that totaled 141,500. So the context that we just wanted to point out for you is that those three nonprofits who had applied, or who had petitioned to be on the ballot last year and had their ballot items approved, came through the door of the Montpelier Community Fund this year. And so there are grant recommendations for those three organizations in the total that we're presenting to you tonight, the 133,250, which is less than the 141,500 that the city spent in total on nonprofit grants last year. Of course, we cannot control whether or not any nonprofits choose to go on the ballot this year. Obviously, that is beyond anyone's scope here. But right now, that's our context for the number that we're presenting to you this year.
I just wasn't sure, did everyone that went on the ballot come to the community fund first? Or they didn't come at all?
No, so the.
Last year, we're talking about last year.
Right, so last, so the, the, the policy that was created, when the Montpelier Community Fund Board was created, was that you can't double dip, right? You can't.
People have, have in the past, so I just wondered if they came to you first and then went to the ballot? They just directly went to the ballot?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, yes.
But to be clear, they, they might do that one year and then the next year, but they can't come to the, the timeline doesn't allow it. They can't come to the application process and then change their mind and appeal to the ballot. I mean, the city's rules for.
I, I know the rules are stated, but people haven't always stayed in it. So that's, I just wanted to make sure.
I'm not aware of anyone who's done that.
They've always done it the next year when they haven't gotten enough this year.
It was also the case that two of those had missed the deadline for various reasons. There were changes going on in the organization in one of them, and I'm not sure what the second one was. But, so that was, they came as petition because they were on, they had missed the deadline for applying to, to the, to the board. The other one actually decided that they did not want to come to the board, but would go directly to the voters.
Okay, thank you.
So we can certainly talk at length if we desire about any of the recommendations or any of the trends that we observed and talked about in the memo. But I'm gonna stop there and take any questions that the council might have.
All right. Go ahead, Ashley.
I was just looking, so Community Connections is listed on here. But from what I understand, that they are no longer the contracted service provider.
We don't know that.
Right.
Okay.
I thought I got an email saying that.
So that was erroneous. Then, so they're, they're gonna be continuing to talk about that decision?
Okay, but I guess, so. Okay, so they're gonna continue to talk about it, that's fine. When will we know for sure whether or not the contract is awarded to them? Because what I don't, I mean, this is an organization that has served Montpelier youth for a while now. But if they don't have the contract and the money's already been allocated and dispersed, I mean, what?
Yeah, so if I can take a crack at responding to that. So the funds are not dispersed until the summer?
New fiscal year, right?
Yeah, the new fiscal year.
Next fiscal year.
Okay.
After July 1.
So there's, there's a good chunk of time between now and then. And I am, in my co-op, I have volunteer time available. I'm also gonna be serving on the school board committee that is looking at this issue. So I'm gonna be very well aware of whether or not the Community Connections contract is awarded. And will definitely be taking it upon myself to work with the city if we should need to take another look at that, if Community Connections is no longer serving the city of Montpelier.
If, if I can add, we do have a history of withholding funds if.
I'm sorry, Ron, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, there is a, a history of withholding funds or delaying funds if the scope of a project has changed or if we learned that it can't be delivered as, as was intended, when was intended. Even though the funds go out beginning of the fiscal year, it's actually in the process of fiscal year. There are contracts, there's memos, there's letters. So it really ends up being more like August, sometimes even into September, so there is an opportunity.
Do you send wording to that when you award it? If there's any change, the money might not happen? I mean.
I think they're worth.
Do we need to add wording?
If, if there's a significant change in the, in the proposed, in the, in the project, then we, then we ask that they.
We, we actually don't send out the, the letter, the finance department does.
Finance and our, our office does it. There are actually contracts for service that.
Okay, so when Ron said, said, "we can hold," did he meant the city?
The city, we, the city. We'd never see.
And so when we make a motion, we don't have to make a special motion for that, it's already being done. Thank you.
Uh, Jack.
So the wording, so I'm, on, on the same topic. So the award letter from the city or whatever would be explicit.
Subject to them providing the services.
On them being the provider.
As described, right.
Glenn.
Thanks, this is fun to read. And I am a little bit curious about whether you can speculate about why nonprofits go back and forth between ballot requests and, and fund applications? I heard that in, in a couple of cases, it was just that they missed the deadline. Is there anything beyond that, just sort of happenstance?
Yeah, well, I mean, there's certainly one significant example, Central Vermont Home and Health, Home Health and Hospice. And so they, in the memo that you received, you can see that they went to the ballot twice for $20,000. And I'm not involved with Central Vermont Home and Health and Hospice myself, so I cannot claim to represent their thinking. However, I did have a very long phone call with them last night. So I do feel updated. And from their perspective, they look at their budget, they look at the number of visits to community members in each of their towns in their region. And then they do a division and they figure out per capita how much they believe each town that they serve should be allocating to them. And so that figure for the city of Montpelier is $20,000. So, you know, if we look at the amount that the Montpelier Community Fund Board has granted over our history, you know, that would be a very significant portion of that total. So in the conversation that we had last night, you know, we talked through that and talked through the fact that, you know, we understood and appreciated very much their very rational process for coming up with that figure. And at the same time, this is a competitive grant making process where they're, you know, in an application portfolio with 43 other applications, and that this was a grant application and not an invoice to the city. And so, you know, they, it was a very productive call, it was very positive, and they, you know, they understand our position and understand that we're presenting a grant making portfolio as a whole to the city that represents a very diverse interests of, you know, taxpayers, basically. You know, and, and therefore can't promise to fulfill every single request and fully fund every single request of every single applicant. So that, you know, particular example has sort of been, you know, that's, that's, that's been the example that has loomed, loomed large, if you will, over the past several years.
Thank you. Well, did you have?
Sorry, one more question, a separate topic. It's also interesting to me that, that it is the Montpelier Community and Arts Fund and a bunch of the language references grants to individual artists. And I remember from previous years, a couple recurring grants to individual artists, but I don't think I see anything like that here in terms of you and applications. I'm, I'm kind of curious about that. Have you heard from individual artists and they say, doesn't apply to me anymore?
We, we noticed the same. By the time we see the applications, of course, the deadline has arrived. So I don't, yet, you're right in your observation. I don't know that we have any insight, other than it's a particular kind of thing and what people are working on and if it's the kind of thing that they feel they could bring to us.
But I, I think it's important to say that we, when we start this whole process, we send out the word quite widely.
Yeah.
And it's generally known and, and the guidelines are known. So people who are interested in applying ought to be able to get access to that word and, and we do our best to make sure that that word is out. And then, so this year, just there were no artists, no individual artists who came to us, but.
We even send a reminder out before the deadline. So we, we correspond twice and it's on the, you know, we make an attempt.
Absolutely, and I appreciate that. And as an individual artist, I remember seeing those, so I'm not, I don't want to imply that.
New for this year, in addition to submitting a, a digital, you know, an application, they can also fill it out directly from the city's website. So we, we do what we can to.
Make it easy for us.
Make it easy-ish. They still have to provide the information and make their case, but we try to make it easy.
Thank you.
Donna, then Jack?
Or Jack can go first.
Okay, Jack then Donna, great.
It's really a question for the manager rather than, than for you folks. And that is, with the bud, does the budget worksheet we have, since, on the face of it, this looks like an increase. Does, does the budget worksheet we have show that it's the 133, but it includes the $26,000 that was budgeted or balloted last year?
So the budget right now shows the 133,250. We actually adjusted that at the last meeting because we'd had a, the lower amount, the one, whatever it was, 120 something. So we, we adjusted that by 8,000. So we have the correct amount in, so that is the combination of everything. Last year, the budget had the 141,500 in the final approved version that voters approved. So we've got, we've matched their recommendation.
Okay, great, thank you.
Donna. Donna?
I saw, Mar, how, and Ron's been on the committee from the beginning, I think, or nearly, and then so has Michael. And, and you, I put so much work into this. It's so incredible. And people should go online and read these, the link that's on the agenda. I, I do have one question, 'cause you provided these wonderful little synopses of why you gave this or that. But there are about four, and one in particular, and I won't mention names, that didn't give you an annual report or didn't include a budget. I mean, like, it sounded like their application was really incomplete, and yet you nearly funded them 100%. And I don't understand that.
You know, honestly, it's hard for me to respond without talking about individu, I, talking about individual organizations.
So, so on one hand, okay, okay. Well, anyway, I was really surprised. And we, it's sort of an up-down. We accept everything you give us or don't accept it. But that is one of my questions. If somebody hasn't given you their last year what they did and showing how they used the money, and then this year don't include enough narrative and budget, I, I don't know why you'd fund them. So I just put that out there as a question.
Yeah, that's a very fair question. I mean, it's something that we very much pay attention to and had a lot of discussion about at this meeting. You know, I think that there, given, given the extremely broad spectrum of nonprofits who are applying to us, you know, from individual artists, grassroots nonprofits, to extremely large sophisticated nonprofits, you know, that have budgets in the tens of millions of dollars and many, many paid staff. You know, while we want to hold everyone to a high standard, at the same time, I think that it's fair to say we also take into account the capacity of the nonprofit to comply with those standards, if that makes sense. You know, and so look at, you know, is the, to what degree is this, you know, for instance, maybe a really small grassroots nonprofit. But I, your point is really well taken, and if you, I understand you're electing to point out.
I'll follow up on this.
Oh, please do.
And so my next question is, so when you respond to them and say, "Okay, you got this, but you, we didn't give you the full amount. We took out 500. You got the 4,000 instead," or whatever, do you say, "Next year, we need this done," or you don't get any money? I mean, is there any consequences? I mean, when I, when I heard, "No budget, no narrative, and they got the money," I just, whoa.
Right. And we can certainly talk to a greater degree about the applications, and in fact, those application, well, those applications aren't.
What benefit's next year? It's continued. I don't know if this is the first year they were so poorly, so poor in their application or not. I don't have that information.
Right, right, right. I think the commi, I would say that the committee as a whole, we definitely can't, I feel like it would probably be inappropriate for us to threaten or to project. Right? And so I feel like we can only respond to what's in front of us and not create consequences around, like, future actions.
Well, but you, you do say, "Because you didn't do this, we didn't give you money."
Yes, right.
So there's some people who are penalized and some who aren't.
We hope they read that and understand. Council has been very careful and, and thoughtful, I should say, in assembling the Community Fund Board membership whose members are drawn from the community. And so we generally have some basis of experience or knowledge or insight for many of the applicants. Not all, but, but many. And so we have this discussion when we review the applications of, how can I say this? As Christine said, there are organizations that are multimillion dollar organizations, and they should know how to write an application. And they should know how to read the guidelines. And there are others who are, who are asking for a really small amount of money, and they're delivering a really targeted service to a really targeted clientele. And we know that that service is being delivered. And we are more hesitant to penalize these one person, one and a half person nonprofits. We'd rather send them a message, "You really need to do better," or we're, you're gonna sort of force a hand, if you will. The bigger entities.
I think that the other challenge that we struggle with is that some of these very small entities that Ron is describing, you know, where they might have one or two staff or no staff, right, they're entirely volunteer staff, are also organizations who've received funding for the city of Montpelier for decades, right? And they're these cherished community institutions. And so that, you know, it is a, a challenge to weigh the fact that we fully understand that these are institutions that are important to the community, have been supported by the city of Montpelier for so many years. And at the same time, you know, we completely concur with you and want to work to hold organizations to a higher standard.
Well, I think you certainly have done wonders, and so that's great.
There's one additional point, and that is, we have a kind of tricky situation in how we communicate with grantees, applicants. Because we can't, we're making a recommendation to the council. The council makes the final decision, right, on yes or no. And so it's difficult for us to say, "If you don't, you know, if you don't get us what we're asking for, we will not make the grant." We don't make the grant. We recommend the grant, okay?
You make the grant, I mean, as far as, you have the inside scoop of if they're meeting your criteria. That's all. That's all. It's okay. You don't have to talk anymore about it.
If I may interject here, you know, the council, I think, last week or one of our budget meetings had raised issues about the timing of our scheduling, not any criticism of anything you're doing. Just the, the funding, you know, would, like, for example, this came in higher than what we'd anticipated. So do we have to change our, you know, how do we coordinate all of that to make it work? And there was some talk that after we got through this cycle, maybe in the spring, to have a conversation with you folks when there's no pending applications and just what could we do to make this work smoother? And it may be that maybe we could talk about these kind of topics then when we don't have pending applications. And then if the council wants to adopt a policy that says, "If you don't submit this, then you don't get it," or you get one shot at it, and, you know, it's prospective as opposed to reacting to what's.
I mean, as, as it is now, we are asking people to submit a report of work in progress for funds they received in August or September in an application that they're submitting in October or November for us to appear before you in January for the item to appear on the ballot in March. So it is, um.
To get funded almost a year later.
Yeah, it is an awkward timeline that we're working with.
Uh, Jack, and then Ashley, and then I would like to be moving forward. Okay.
Well, I don't want to belabor, belabor the point, but following up on what Donna said, you could certainly let some of these organizations know that they're, that you're getting kind of some questioning looks from the council saying, you know, "If you can't do a better job of documenting the need, the council might not be so receptive in the next year to, to grant funding this request." You don't have to be the heavy, because in fact, you're not.
Right, if it would be helpful if we had a policy that said something like that.
Right. No, and overall, I think we would absolutely welcome conversation with the council around guidance for the funds. You know, this, the, the guidelines, our guidance from the council has been very loose. And so we would be more than happy to partake in a, a conversation like that because we're certainly interested in making these funds as impactful as possible.
Great. Ashley?
I guess I would propose, I, I reviewed all of them as well, and it concerns me that, you know, incomplete filings. I, I am familiar with almost every organization on there. But I, I also feel like, you know, we just had the investment policy presentation where we acknowledged that we are the city's fiduciary. And so I, I think that the council really needs to have, like, a firm policy on what expectations are about applications. Because, you know, like, when, when I, you know, when I have to submit something for work that, you know, like, if I were in private practice, I would have to provide an accurate accounting of the work done for the fee paid. And, and it just strikes me that, you know, I know that these organizations serve an important purpose, but we're also spending, you know, residents' money on these organizations. And I think people are entitled to know what their tax dollars are, are doing. So I don't know the mechanism by which the council would work on a, a policy so that we can be the ones saying, "You don't meet criteria. You don't qualify for funding through this program." And you can, you can apply to be on the ballot, but.
Again, I'd suggest we work that through with the Community Fund Board. And just sort of from a historical perspective, it's coming from a place where these were voted by voters with no background as to what was going, no vetting whatsoever. So, you know, it's, it's an evolving process.
So let's take that up, you know, sometime spring or summer. It'd be great. Jack?
I move that we approve the proposed grant awards from the Montpelier Community and Arts Fund.
I'll second.
Further discussion?
I guess maybe just a procedural question. So, I mean, by definition, if it's approved at the level that's requested, we have to add that in to the.
Budget?
Overall budget.
It's already in it.
It's in.
Even, even at the new.
Yes.
But yes, you are committing that in tonight or at your next meeting, you won't reduce this line in the budget.
Okay, there was a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, thank you very much, and, yeah.
My questions were, any criticism of you? You've done such a great job. It's really amazing.
Thank you. I'm glad you're asking questions.
Okay, how are you doing, team? Do you need a break? Are you feeling okay? Keep moving forward?
I can go to the bathroom, come back. It's all right.
Uh, let's take, let's take a five-minute break. Okay. All right, so we're gonna come back from our brief break and moving on to our next agenda item, which is the Energy Efficiency Charter Change Language. So I just wanna recognize from the last time that we had this conversation, I was in the roles of champion and expert and trying to moderate the meeting, and that was maybe not ideal. And so for this meeting, or this portion of it, I've invited a, a couple of folks here to be a part of our discussion. So I'm gonna let them introduce themselves, but I will at least not be playing the role of expert in this situation. So go ahead, if you tell us who you are and who you represent, et cetera. And there's, those little things on the microphones there, yeah.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. My name is Richard Fazy. I am a principal of an energy efficiency consulting firm, Energy Futures Group in Heinsburg. And I've been working on building energy labeling for decades. I can say more than that, but maybe that's enough.
That's great.
I'm Phoebe Howe. I'm here with Efficiency Vermont. I have background in the three years that I've been there in promoting zero-energy affordable housing, primarily focused on new construction. But I'm really excited to be delving a little bit into the multifamily, existing buildings realm with a project that I'll be doing here in Montpelier throughout the year. And I'll say a little bit more about that, maybe after the initial discussion that you'll be getting into about the charter language.
Great, so they're here if we have questions about the logistics of things. I have one comment to bring to the.
You just can't help yourself.
I know. Well, so there's, there's one edit, which is, in the language that was provided with the memo, it says, "An act ordinances enforcing minimum efficiency standards." It should say, "Minimum energy efficiency standards and disclosure requirements, et cetera."
Mine has energy efficiency.
Uh, the one online does not. Where, where's yours? Where, what are you looking?
I got mine off the agenda.
Yeah, it's in the cover sheet. The language is right there in the cover sheet.
Yeah, it says, "Enforcing minimum efficiency standards." It should say, "Enforcing minimum energy efficiency standards."
The last statement, the last sentence in there has.
Yeah, the last part has energy, but the, in the beginning, so it's a simple tweak. Okay, any comments from the council or questions? Connor?
I'd just say this, achieves what I asked for anyways last time, as far as making it broader. I think you get too far into the weeds on this stuff. It's subject to all sorts of interpretation. So it's a pretty clean cut to bring to the legislature. I think voters will look at this on a ballot and have some sense of what it means. So I'm in a place where I could support it.
And I wanna also thank Ashley for providing basically the, the base of this language.
That legal education was worth something.
Yeah, it's very helpful. Yeah. Any other comments? Now, would anybody like to make a motion?
I would move that we adopt the language for the proposed charter change that is contained in the supporting document section of the cover sheet on the agenda with the addition of the word "energy" before, before "efficiency" and after "minimum" in the first line.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Well, that was easy. My goodness. Thank you.
I feel like we should ask you some. What do you think would be the objection to this? What should we expect people to not understand?
I think that the, there would probably not be an objection to this per se. But once, once it were considered and implemented, I think that those who, who own buildings that they, people, the sellers perceive as being less than desirable may question why they want to make the energy performance of their buildings known. So there's, there's some resistance by sellers, and that, that has been the case in the past of, of, of buildings that, that are not sort of up to standard. And if I might add.
Yeah, go ahead.
The, 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 the whole objective here is to make energy visible and so that the marketplace can work and so that there are built-in market incentives to improve the efficiency of buildings and to reward those who have invested and made their, their properties more efficient.
Yeah, fair enough. And Phoebe, did you wanna tell us about your connection with that, that program with Efficiency Vermont?
Sure, so I'll just take a minute, yeah, to talk about, like I mentioned, I'm gonna be diving into working with multifamily property owners here in Montpelier. And I should add, that's private, so that's not, groups like Downstreet, that is a private property owner. So typically, multifamily rental owners are some of the hardest folks to reach when you're looking to advocate for energy efficiency. Just because oftentimes, you know, as we know, tenants are paying for their heat and electricity, and so there's less of an incentive for that property owner to be investing in energy efficiency in their building. That being said, there are a lot of other amazing benefits of energy efficiency for everybody. And specifically in the case of a multifamily property owner, looking at just lowering overall operational costs of their building, reducing maintenance, improving tenant health comfort, financial situation thereby improving their tenant retention. And so that's something that we're really building into our messaging as we're engaging with multifamily property owners is, it is about cash flow. It's also about some of these additional benefits. So, so knowing that this has traditionally been a difficult group to reach, at sort of Ann's request and suggestion, we're excited to be really proactive in Montpelier with that group. So I will be conducting outreach to all those private multifamily rental property owners, offering a free energy walkthrough and sort of a concierge service, as we've been talking about it, helping them throughout the process. So at the very least, everybody who I'll be reaching out to will be able to access free LED bulbs and water-saving devices in addition to that walk throughout their property. And if they choose to proceed with appliance rebates, heating, cooling system, incentives, cash incentives for deeper retrofit, air sealing, insulation work, I'll be there helping them access financing, contractor networks, all that good stuff. So I'm really excited. I'll be conducting that outreach later this month and then visiting with folks and helping them with their projects for the rest of the year.
Donna?
Do you work with condominium associations?
That's a good question. So that is.
Leave me your card.
So, yeah, so that's outside, like, that specific focus of what I'm describing. But one thing that we wanna make sure, as we embark on this specific project in Montpelier, everybody understands is that we are 100% here for whether it's the condo or the single-family homeowner. The proactive piece of my outreach is, you know, gonna be focused on those property owners, but would love to talk to you about your condo association and what we can do.
Got your date.
Yeah.
Yep. Uh, Jack?
Many years ago, it's, it's good to see here, many years ago, when Efficiency Vermont was first created, I served for about 10 or 15 years on the Consumer Advisory Board of Efficiency Vermont. And one of the things that. the things that I was looking at, trying to have us do, was have an automatic tie-in with the electric companies, so that when someone would get a disconnect notice, they would be informed of the availability of demand-side management services as part of the disconnect notice. Is there, and I don't, I don't think it ever happened while I was there, is there any, anything like that with the electric companies, where they refer people if they're facing disconnection?
So, can you explain further? So, if somebody is about to get disconnected for non-payment, you're suggesting that they be informed of options available to them to help reduce their electric costs?
Exactly, because, especially with, with low-income tenants and other low-income customers, if they're having trouble paying their bills, helping them reduce their bills is one, one way to address that problem.
Yeah. So, there is not anything specifically that I'm personally aware of. However, that one opportunity that I could pursue in my discussions with landlords would be, as far as they understand their tenant's financial situation, we could refer their tenants to Green Mountain Powers Energy Assistance Program, which reduces their electric bills by 25%. So, that could be a piece to work into this if I'm able to talk to tenants directly.
Okay, thanks.
Great suggestion.
Great. Well, thank you so much for, both for being here.
Great, thank you.
For your support.
Yeah, for sure. Okay. Alright, we are making good time, team. Alright, on to the budget. You headed down that?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And based on the suggestions that we make here, are you or somebody else gonna have a running track of excellence?
So, because it's a public hearing, I was gonna do a quick overview of where we're at now for the public.
Actually, before I forget, I have one question following up on the previous item, which is, do we, mm, we had this motion that passed this language, but we need to file language with the
Motion should be to file that language with the city clerk. I'm sorry, I should have caught that.
Do you think we could just quickly have a separate motion to that effect, team?
I'll make a motion that we file the charter change language with the city clerk.
As passed? Okay, thank you, team.
And set, and I know this was in that motion that Councilmember Bate just made, and set the public hearing for the January 24th.
Oh, absolutely, it was right there.
I heard you say that.
Okay, and the second is okay with that? I forget who seconded.
It was Connor.
Connor, are you okay with that? Okay. Okay, thank you. Further discussion? Alright, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you. Just wanted to make sure I dotted the i, crossed the t on that one. Okay, so, on to the budget. Do you, how are you doing there, Bill?
I'm doing great. Give me just a second.
Do you want us to wait for you, or shall we start?
No, I'm just about ready. So, my plan was to just do for the public and for you, a quick overview of where we're at after your last meeting, and then have us have our discussion, and I'll put the spreadsheet back up with the running total, and then we'll get there, so. I don't know if we need it off.
What do you think?
Sure.
Off?
Not off.
Not off.
Not off? Oh, not off.
So, on.
Sorry, no, the contrast is too bright, because I can't see that well.
Got it. Okay, so, this is, at the last meeting, council has held a workshop, they adopted a preliminary budget, so tonight is the first of two public hearings on those preliminary budgets. Council can make changes tonight, and again, at the following meeting on the 24th. But based on last week, this is a quick overview of where we're at. The FY '20 budget, our goals going into it were to implement the strategic plan, continue our capital and equipment funding plan, and deliver responsible services. Won't go into detail, but we did have a strategic planning work this spring, laying out several areas of, for strategic outcomes, and while I will go through the budget, at least initially, based on those areas. First was community prosperity, and the budget, it doesn't, continue to include $100,000 for the Montpelier Development Corporation, maintains our planning and zoning staff to implement the new zoning and master plan, and implements our TIF district. In the areas of environmental stewardship, we had $5,000 for the Montpelier Energy Advisory Committee, currently has two, a new parks position and a new tree management position, funds stormwater projects in the capital plan, includes funding for the GMT Circulator Bus and one-time funding to, for an energy planning grant. In the inclusive, equitable, and welcoming community area, we've just talked about the community fund, in fact, you just approved it, there's increased funding there. We also have new funding for the art synergy proposed funding. The Feast Program for needy people at the Senior Center is continued, there's increased funding for Montpelier Alive, and continued funding for our community enhancements. Under our sustainable infrastructure, we've continued our capital improvement plan and equipment funding with an increase, as we've been doing in several years, the last several years. The water and sewer infrastructure plan is being followed, we've included a facilities and slash energy director to begin in October, and have funding in our capital plan for complete streets work. Finally, we have our thoughtfully-built, I don't know if, actually, I don't think it's finally, but we have our, next, we have our thoughtfully-built environment area, where we included our funding for the downtown improvement district and several downtown projects, and a lot of our efforts this year is to complete work of projects that are underway. And finally, our goal for more housing, we've increased the Housing Trust Fund by $50,000, and again, implementing our TIF, which we hope will spawn even more housing projects. In our public health and safety area, we've added a new police officer, we've anticipated public events and their costs, we've continued funding our flood gauges, we've continued expansion of our paramedic program, continued funding for Project Safe Catch, and again, as I just mentioned, we've increased funding for the community fund, some of which goes to public's health and safety organizations. In our responsible and responsive government area, we've continued our communications efforts, our included employee wellness, our service levels, all maintained, we've included our bridge article. This year, we implemented our new Invisio Dashboard with our, which is tracking our strategic plan process and available live at any time, and we are pursuing our own access Montpelier software, which we hope to roll out this year, so citizens can advise us, and we can track requests of work. We've tentatively set aside reserve funds for citizen survey, strategic planning, and energy plan. This, of course, would be subject to the availability of those funds, and what our fund balance ends up, but that is our tentative plan. So, budget changes from last year, basically taking all those things I just said and rolling them right up into one quick list. We've increased the CIP funding by $25,000, added a new police officer position, a new tree position, a new parks position, and three-quarters of a facilities director, which is intended to be a full-time position to start three, a quarter of the way into the year, increased the Housing Trust Fund, added funding for the new art synergy program, increased Montpelier Alive, increased the community fund, considered $2,000 for childcare funding for meetings, and again, the one-time funding for, that I just mentioned, for energy strategic planning, community survey. So, those are changes from last year's budget. Taking a look at, and I'll zip through these charts pretty quickly, but here's a chart of where our funding come from. Again, about two-thirds of this comes from property taxes. Taking a look at how our funding is, for different services, is split up. Again, you can see our core services of police, fire, public works, and the capital plan are really the bulk of our, bulk of our areas. We're about 55% personnel, which is always a struggle for us, since we are such a people-oriented business. And then quickly, if we look at our various services, and this will show up, these charts will all be in the annual report, people will see them more clearly than they're showing up in the sliding, where we get to see sort of how much an average person is paying in their property bill for each individual service. Someone asked me, actually, last week, if that backed out revenues that were attributable to specific agencies, and it does. So, for example, the ambulance revenue has been backed out of the fire budget, and whereas general revenues have been prorated across, that's policy wonk stuff, but I'm happy to talk about that more if people want to know. So, overall, what does that mean? It means the property tax rate would go by 4.3 cents, or 3.9%, with an average tax bill of $98. The district heat rates were already approved, the water and sewer plan is estimated, water and sewer rates, excuse me, are estimated to go up to 3.5% as, as per plan, with no changes for the sewer benefit or CSO benefit. Process-wise, again, tonight is our first public hearing, Thursday, January 24th, would be the second and final public hearing, when the council would take a final vote to, to adopt a budget to put on the ballot. And then the voting is on Tuesday, March 5, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, with early voting usually starting around mid-February. That's all I've got on that. Happy to answer. Any questions about that, before we get into detail if you or the public have any questions?
Okay, I'm gonna officially open the public hearing on this. Now, I know that there's maybe one or two people who had some changes that they were hoping to make. And so, what I would propose for how we go about that process, is that we, if someone would like to make a change to what was approved last time, that we take them sort of one bit at a time. And so, if you have a proposal about X, then we might vote on that. And then, if you have something else, then we'll take up the, the next thing separately. Does, does that sound okay, team? Or would you prefer to do it all together? I think it makes more sense to do them separately, but that's just me. What do you think, Bill?
Whatever you say, mayor.
It's becoming diplomatical.
I think it's easier to do it one at a time, but that's just me. Okay, so, anyone would like to, I mean, I, I would like to advocate that we not have the, the additional parks position. I, I will say for myself, I think in light of Jeff's retiring, I think it makes some sense to wait on, if, if we do need to have some additional staff for the parks, that we wait until Jeff is retired, and then whoever is new can be a part of that hiring process. I'll just say that for my part, just to kick us off. Yes.
Was that a complete removal, or from back to part-time instead of full-time?
I would propose that we completely remove it, but that's just me.
I'm actually
Don't agree.
I'm actually inclined to agree with the mayor. I've been thinking a lot about what a budget increase, I think we even got it down to, what, 3, 3.8%?
3.9. Well, the, the budget is at 3.8%, the tax increase is at 3.9%.
Yeah, and I, I, I know that we need the position, but I also know that, you know, this increase plus whatever the school budget increase is, is, is going to be significant for a number of people, and I don't make this decision lightly, but I, I feel it's incumbent to be mindful that tax increases translate to increases in rents for renters, and I think there are a lot of folks who rent in the city that just can't absorb that, and I, I know how important that position is, and I hope that there, we can find ways to work through this until, maybe we can make that a budget priority for next year, assuming when re-elected, I would certainly make that a priority, but I, I just, I don't think that it's something that we can fund this year.
Other thoughts? Donna?
Even without the aspect of Jeff retiring and taking the work of two full-time people, the ashbore is not gonna be taken care of by the one person. And so, to me, when we talk about Confluence Park, public art, other things, they're based on a healthy park and tree line in the city. And we can't do that without the right parks people. So, at least a part-time person.
I would assume that if the tree person is overwhelmed, that, sort of like this year, when we, you know, in between our budget cycle had a stopgap, where we were like, you know, we have to have something in place by the time the adult, you know, bugs are gonna emerge in March, and that doesn't work with our budget cycle, my gosh, Emerald Ashbore, if you would not please just work with our, our funding cycle, that we could do that again, right? So, that's, that would be my plan there, if, if it turns out to be overwhelmed. But, sorry to disagree.
We're already overwhelmed. Like, I just don't like to make a budget that plans to use our reserve.
Other thoughts? Glenn?
So, I was talking with Councilor Kruger a little bit over the weekend. Rosie and I, I think, have very different instincts about many of our decisions. At the same time, I feel like I have come over to the mayor's current point of view on, on this. I think that we may want to add another parks position in the future, but I don't think that we have to now. As it is, we will have two full-time parks people plus one full-time tree management position, which is one more person than we have had, if I'm correct. And I think that we can afford to put this off at least a little bit.
Connor?
Yeah, I, I think I'd be reluctant to do it, but as I talk to people, and they're seeing the rate hike, it would be my lowest priority, and I'm sort of all or nothing on this, as we spoke last time, I think if we do a part-time one, there's, they're gonna be overwhelmed. And if we can wait a little bit, I would definitely commit to doing it right after, taking some time and supporting a future budget here.
Do you want to weigh in, Jack?
I'm kind of agnostic about this. I'm still undecided. I, the two things I have in mind are, one, just hearing what, what Connor just said, which is that if we hire a half-time parks person, that person will immediately be overwhelmed, which suggests to me that if we, that a fortiori, if we don't add anyone to the parks department, then the, the people who are there in the parks department will, will certainly be overwhelmed. But I'm curious if Jeff, I think, is still here, if either, if either Donna or Jeff could talk a little bit about what this new person would be doing.
Well, I think Jeff, as he's walking up, for me, when I look at what Jeff and Alex do now, as two people really, and Jeff's been very clear on all his timesheets, and if you've ever been around, is just how much time he puts in. So, that when he retires, one of his concerns was, the new people aren't gonna do that. And so, to replace just the sheer time that Jeff's doing now before the Emerald Ash Board, it's equivalent to two people. You have a new person coming in who's gonna take time to get up to par. So, it seems to me, we don't want to understaff it now, when we have this other crisis coming in.
Yeah, thanks. First, I want to clarify, we don't have two full-time park people, we have two three-quarters parks folks, so that's crucial.
Is it three-quarters or 80%?
80% would be more accurate.
Thanks.
That would be more accurate, thank you. So, in part, I'd, I'd like to move the parks out of survival mode and opportunistic mode and crisis mode into a place that we can actually move forward on some of the visions the Park Commission has, that, that Alec and I have had, and that the council has had, with serving new neighborhoods. That takes a certain amount of letting whoever is leading the park at the time, having time to connect with landowners, work with the fundraiser that we now have at Community Services, and to try to implement that in a way that wouldn't, is not so expensive for the city, for the city. And the recent proposal for stone all metals is a good example of that, if you, if you do that at fair market value, it'd be very onerous, in my mind, for the city to get that property. But if, if someone has time to really work with an organization like Trust for Public Lands, work with landowners, work on donations, work on creative things, something like that can be done for a much more affordable price. That's not gonna happen if you have two 80% people. So, yeah, I'd like to So, yeah, I'd like to move out of survival mode and move into creation, creating new opportunities mode is, was my, was my wish.
Uh, Connor?
Are the eighty-percent positions receiving health care right now and other benefits?
Yes, because while they're full-time, just one day a week has been allotted to tree work.
Right. I was gonna try to, so there are two people doing parks and trees.
And trees.
And, and so two full-time people. So, and so you, you'll either go to three or four people doing that same parks and trees work.
I think we, yeah, I'll refrain from commenting. Sorry. Further comments? Would anyone like to make a motion regarding this particular position?
I, I would move that we subtract the full-time parks position from the budget.
Second?
Further discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Opposed, yep. And so the mayor votes aye to make a fourth, and so we'll take that out. Where does that leave us?
Uh, three point three.
Three point three-six. Okay, any other items that people would like to discuss? Glenn?
This is my fault. Last time, I did not realize that we had left the arts funding at twenty thousand. I understood that we had cut it in half from fifty thousand to twenty-five, and that's where I thought we were. So I would love to just at least get it back to half of their funding request at twenty-five thousand, because I was annoyed at that.
Ashley, I feel really bad about this, too. I, I have been thinking sort of about the ways that we can still fund all of the things that we want to do while also being mindful of what that translation could look like for residents. And I was thinking actually reducing that by another five thousand for now. And then I, and I, I love all of the ideas, and, and I had heard some proposals bounced around about removing it completely, which I would vociferously oppose. And, you know, this is like a super uncomfortable position to be in, but I suppose this is what we signed up for. And so I, I would propose that we reduce the twenty thousand to fifteen thousand, not because I don't feel the work is important, but because I feel that in order for us to be mindful of everyone in the community, I, I would rather do something that's not as large right now. And again, I think with the development of Confluence Park and, you know, all of the potential space that we have upcoming to make big decisions about, I would rather have those decisions in place now and then fund the arts once we sort of know how much space we're working with to add new and exciting art to.
Yeah, go ahead, Glenn.
I think that we have an opportunity now to put as much weight behind this new public art plan as we can. I am somewhat dubious that this will, that there will be such a friendly counsel at all points going forward to this kind of proposal. And I think that, for instance, even with the Confluence Park, I believe we saw a chart earlier from the River Conservancy folks, I'm sorry, the, from Ricardo, pointing out how much of the budget might go toward art installations there. And I don't remember what the number was, but it was not low. And I think that, for instance, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong here, but I think that this city money could potentially be applied to that. So when we imagine the Confluence Park, I think we can imagine budget art in the Confluence Park, or at least somewhat open and, and well-supported art in that kind of park. I think that this is the time to, to fund it as well as we can manage. I'd love to argue for the, the full request for fifty thousand, but I, I feel like there is no appetite for that. Twenty-five feels less, I hesitate to say insulting, but twenty-five feels, feels palatable to me, where less than that starts to feel like picking, picking little bits off.
Would anyone else like to weigh in on this? Go ahead, Donna.
I would just like to keep it at the twenty.
Okay. Anyone else? Jack? Connor?
Solomon, keep it.
So would either of you like to make a motion to the effect of what you were? No?
I'll happily make a motion to push it back up to twenty-five, but.
Is there a second? Okay, so.
Second, I'm not gonna get any.
I'm glad I made the motion.
Okay, there's a, there's a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, well, so the motion's not passed, I'm sorry. Any other items that you would like to raise? Ashley?
I have a couple of questions. So the hundred thousand for Montpelier Development Corporation, what, like, what does that do? Like, what is the hundred thousand dollars? Like, what is the, like, is there carry forward? Is there, is it all gone? Is it, like, how does that?
Because we just, so we just had them in and reviewed their activities and what they're doing. So this is the five-year plan that we had with them. They keep, they're a corporation, so the money goes to them and they retain it. So we do get a financial statement, I'm sorry, I don't have it here, I'm sure we can get it. And they use that for, obviously, for their staff and their office expenses and those sorts of things, their rent and that stuff, and whatever they use to, you know, I'm not knowledgeable enough about their budget to tell you exactly what they do, so I, I can get before the next meeting, we can probably get financial statements from them, I'm sure.
Yes, I would like to, to see the financial statements before, like, I just, I, I'm struggling because I think things like public art are really important, and I think development is important, but I, I also wanna be mindful that, like, there has to be a bit of a give and a take, and I don't wanna spend everything focusing on the future and sort of forgetting about what that translates to, like, right now.
Well, maybe this is something that we can find more information about and have for the next time. This is why we have multiple hearings. Sound all right?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else anybody would like to raise? We're otherwise at three point three-six, yes.
It's just shifting. We spoke last time about maybe moving some of these items over to the Montpelier Alive budget for them to manage. One that comes to mind, like, right off the top of my head, is the legislator welcome reception. I think they'd be a good group to evaluate whether that's a good bang for our buck as far as economic development. They're here anyways.
Hey, Dan, did you hear that?
And, and I, I just mentioned that one, but if there's other ones, maybe we think we should throw in there.
So just for some context, this might be a conversation that, like, as long as we're not talking about changing the amount, then this might be the kind of thing that we could take up later.
How about do that, too?
Does that sound, does that sound okay, Dan? Great, okay. But let's, you know, let's take that up at some other time. Okay. Further comments? Any comments from the public? Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Liz Genge. I live in Montpelier, and I also work at Downstreet Housing and Community Development. And I just first wanna say thank you, everyone, for doing what you're doing, is, I really appreciate it. But I wanted to talk from Downstreet, that we support the current one hundred and ten thousand dollars for the Housing Trust Fund in the city budget. Most of us are aware that the new French block apartments on Main Street are now open. The lights were on last week, people are moving in on the fifteenth. So thank you, and it was a great celebration. But what we wanted to emphasize tonight was that the one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that the Housing Trust Fund contributed to the French block is one of the ten funding sources, the very highly competitive federal and state funding sources that we received. There are many projects, as we know, across the state that are like the French block on Main Streets who don't get funded. So the commitment from this city and this Housing Trust Fund really matters when we apply for funding. Beyond the critical dollars that we receive from the trust fund, those who review our applications can see that the local community is truly invested. That plays a huge role in this highly competitive funding environment. And we did, we, we leveraged millions more in part because of this, in eighteen new, new units. But more importantly, in addition to developing housing units, the trust fund also provides a deferred loan for first-time homebuyers in purchasing in the city. And a recent homebuyer, Carol Montgomery, asked us to just share a brief letter of, of thanks. So I'm gonna do that right now. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the Montpelier Housing Trust Fund for the grant given to me in July, allowing me to be a first-time homebuyer of the above property in Montpelier. Moving to Vermont to be with my family is a big step financially, but one I was hoping to afford, given the right circumstances. Patty Dupuy and Cheryl Moyer of Downstreet patiently led me through the many steps necessary to qualify for the down payment grant, as well as another that afforded from the Montpelier Housing Trust Fund. Together, these monies made it possible for me to go forward. Without the entirety of both of these interest-free loans, the purchase would not have been possible. In my desire to give back to the community, I'm currently serving as a volunteer for the Tree Board, Lost Nation Theater, and the Sunday evening dinner program at the Bethany Church. Many friends and family have visited since my moving here, and all have commented on how obvious it is to them that I have truly adopted Montpelier as my home. Thank you for your generosity.
Great, thank you. Any further comments?
Dan Groberg, Executive Director of Montpelier Alive, I'm a resident of Liberty Street in Montpelier. I'd like to encourage the council to reconsider Montpelier Alive's full request for an additional ten thousand dollars in funding for next fiscal year. This has been a really exciting year for Montpelier Alive. Montpelier Alive is directly responsible for bringing two major conferences to Montpelier in June, the New England Foundation for the Arts Creative Communities Exchange, as well as the State of Vermont Downtown and Historic Preservation Conference, each of which will bring three hundred people to Montpelier over a three-day period, they're back-to-back in early June. Related to the French block, the French block leveraged over two hundred thousand dollars in downtown tax credits that are only available for that project because Montpelier is a designated downtown, Montpelier Live being the organization that allows Montpelier to be one of those designated downtowns. We bring a lot of value to Montpelier, both things that are very visible and things that are less visible. I've heard Councilwoman Day, for instance, talk about the administrative fee in the D I D. as an alternative option. And the challenge with that would be that you're sort of robbing Peter to pay Paul in that option, where there are many worthy projects that are supported through the D I D. budget, where we'd be taking money away essentially from the work that we're actually doing in the community through the D I D. budget, were we to take an administrative fee out of that. So while that's one great option, I, I think a better option would be for the, the increased funding that would actually allow us to do both the work and support the administrative costs of actually doing that work. So I, I encourage the council to, to reconsider that and, and consider our full request.
Thank you. I just wanna put out there that I, I would support adding that five thousand back in. Don't know if anybody else would, but I, oh, okay. Would anybody like to make a motion to that effect?
I'll move to restore the five thousand dollars to Montpelier Alive.
For a total of, thank you.
Second?
Further discussion?
Can we see what?
Yeah, what does that do? I'm so thankful for this.
Saying it's the greatest thing ever.
Great, we're definitely keeping this for next year. Maybe not the board board, I don't know, but this. Would anyone else like to weigh in on that? No? Okay.
I guess I, I would propose then that we take it out of the M D. C. I, I just, I, I appreciate that it's only five thousand dollars, but that it's, it's also, like, even three point four makes me really uncomfortable, and I, I understand that both are really important functions, but if you're pricing everybody out, that, then who is, I mean, like? Yeah?
If, if that's being seriously considered, I would withdraw my request for the additional funds. I think that would be very short-sighted to remove any funding from the M D. C. They're startup, in startup mode, they have not yet been able to leverage any additional funds, and the city funding is critical to what they do. So I would, I would caution the council not to make that choice.
Jack?
I, I know that we're likely to have some more discussion of the Montpelier Development Corporation at our next hearing. We had a presentation from them very recently, and it's, this is one of those things, this is a type of endeavor that's very hard to really see, well, what's it doing? How do we evaluate it? And so it's, it's, it's just the very nature of it. But it, the, also the nature of it is that investing the money over a number of years can bring about some, some production, some increased growth and vitality and revenues to the city in future years that wouldn't happen unless we've been putting those years in, that money in for years. And so I'd be concerned about cutting the development corporation at, at this point, 'cause I think, as, as the manager mentioned, the council adopted a five-year plan. The, there was staffing turnover just within the past year, and so it feels like they're just getting a running start, and I hate to undermine that.
We, we did have a motion.
And a second.
And a second, okay. Any further discussion on, on this? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so that passes, and so we're at three point four-two. All right, any further things folks would like to discuss? Yes. And then Glenn, did you have, was that a hand?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm Dan Dickerson from the Parks Commission. I'm told that, I think I missed the boat on, on this, but I do wanna take a few moments to just recognize someone that's spent countless hours of, of his life above and beyond the normal forty-hour work week to maintain our parks, to come to Parks Commission meetings, to come to city council meetings, to lead volunteer groups, to, to take volunteer groups on, on trips, and that's Jeff Byer. Within a matter of months, he, as far as I know, he's gonna be retired from the city, and I do not wanna create the expectation of our next Parks Director that, that that should be the standard. And so, given the fact that when we lose him, we lose close to a, a full-time staff person above the Parks Director position, we're losing a lot. And getting an additional position, whether it's this coming year, or next year, or the year after, hopefully it's not that far out, is, is vital to, to our Parks Department. You know, not only maintaining the existing park infrastructure that we have, but maintaining Confluence Park, maintaining new trails at North Branch, potentially maintaining trails at Morse Farm, which is a huge opportunity for the city, given, although it's, it's in East Montpelier. There's a lot of potential out there, and, and with the two staff people we've had, you know, we've sort of just tread water for a long time. And I, I just wanna say that having that position is, is really, really important to the Parks Commission, to the Parks Department, to the city. I apologize that I didn't get this message to you sooner, and, and I did send a letter. I apologize for not getting that to you sooner, but I at least wanna take the opportunity to stand in front of you and, and just sort of try to... to stand in front of you and just sort of try to expound how important this position is. So, thank you.
Thank you. Glenn?
Yeah, I see that letter now, just now. Thank you, Dan. But I wasn't gonna talk about that. I did want to just come back briefly to the potential funding set aside for the citizen survey. Bill happens to have it selected on there right now, I think. By random. And as I understand it, that's... As I understand it, that $5,000 that now is not in there was to be set aside for...
Future.
Future, so $5,000 a year for three years or something to pay for the next survey. And thinking it over, that feels like it really is worthwhile, and something that we should at least consider more explicitly, because I think that it's something that would pay back and more. And it's a, again, relatively small yearly set aside. So, I don't know if anyone else has any thoughts about it, but I thought I would bring it back to our attention.
This was a longstanding thing from Alan Weiss, a lot, many years ago, wasn't it? Wasn't he a champion of the survey?
He was. We, you know, in 2009, we did the National Citizen Survey, and it was, in my opinion, at least, very helpful and valuable, got us a lot of good information, including demographic things. And at that time, we thought, we thought we would do it every couple of years, and funding being what it was, we kept putting it off. And it struck me that we're, you know, now coming up to 2019, and it's been, will be 10 years, so it was time to do it again. And so, I was proposing to do that out of one-time money this year, so we can get it done, but then say, hey, you know, maybe if we set some money aside, we can do it every three years. But, you know, we can look at that, we could do 7,500 next year, we could, you know, there's, I mean, I appreciate the support for it, I think it's really important, and communities that use this tool the best, use it regularly, and then use it to benchmark themselves and track their performance. You know, every 10 years is interesting, every two or three years is really, you know, measuring what you're doing. But, you know, we also have numbers to hit, so...
I mean, I would just say that as someone who loves data, and especially, you know, considering the community indicators that we are hoping to keep track of, and there were a lot of requests from the last time we were talking about the community indicators for data that doesn't really exist right now, and there might be some opportunity with the survey to get some of those critical pieces of information that is otherwise not being tracked. So, anyway, I just want to put that out there as that opportunity. I would be down for adding this, but see if anybody else is. What do you males like to weigh in? Yes, Donna?
I just don't want to keep adding all these small things, because we are gonna need more parks personnel, and we're gonna have to face that, and we may have other things we need. So, I think it's misleading, because we took 55,000 out, and suddenly, we've been adding these little things that we're gonna get ourselves in a worse bind than if we just had stayed with the 55.
Fair enough. Other thoughts? Would anyone like to make a motion regarding this item?
Sure. I move that we put $5,000 in for citizen survey once a year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion? Any other comments? No? Okay. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Nay.
And I don't, I would not make a fourth. So, that one fails, and moving on. How you doing, team? You doing okay? Unless you want to be done. Any other items that, or any comments from the public?
I'm just gonna make my statement again. I just, I just did some rough math, and I realize that there's not a direct correlation between like how much rent increases and how much property taxes increase, but it translates to a relatively significant number when you're talking about folks who are really trying to just sort of get by in this city. And I understand that we have priorities and difficult decisions to make, but I really, I am struggling to accept a 3.42 increase, and this, in addition to the school budget increase that we're waiting to hear, you know, definitively, I think, which is next?
Oh, I don't know when that is.
You know, I don't know. Well, we will get their numbers, obviously, because it has to go on the ballot.
Right.
Now that they're a separate school district, I don't know if they'll be coming in to present to us like they used to.
Oh, that's a reasonable point.
We have a conversation to have with them.
Can we invite them?
We should invite them.
I just, I feel like this is sort of the way that people like get this information, and...
They'll all be in the annual report together, and we usually put it all together. I'll communicate with them about that.
But it would be really helpful.
Yeah, we always have that for the last budget hearing.
I bet we have to anyway, because we still have to put it on the ballot, so...
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Further thoughts, team? Jack?
I'm pretty happy where we are. I'm not thinking of anything that I would ask to either add or subtract.
Okay. Further comments? Okay, so, any comments from the public? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing.
And I'll make a motion to advance the budget as we've amended it tonight.
And set the next pub...
Next public hearing for January 24th.
Great.
Second.
Further discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Thank you, team. And, all right, so, on to council reports. What do you men in particular like to start? Go ahead, Jack.
I'll start. Last Thursday night, we had the open house in celebration for the new apartments at the French Block, and for anyone who didn't, who missed it or wasn't able to be there, it was, it was a great event. We got a chance to see the new apartments, the work that Downstreet did to renovate that building that's been a blight in Montpelier for 80 years, was incredible. And I heard a lot of people there who were wandering around touring the apartments, who were clearly not people who were candidates for affordable housing, but middle-class people who were saying that they could picture living in a place like that, right in the center of town. And I hope that there are other people who own property downtown who see the response that this housing has gotten, and think about putting their business, their property to similar use in town. We can still use a more housing right in the center of the city, whether it's affordable renters, rentals, as we saw last week, or market-rate rentals, or even condominium ownership for quite affluent people in the city. Those all could be good uses for buildings in downtown Montpelier.
Cool. Thank you. Pass. Whoever wants to start?
I'll be at Baggy Dose tomorrow morning at 8:30, and I'll just say, it's been going really well there. Sometimes, no one shows up, and I get to check my email, which is great. Other times, some single person shows up, and we have a long conversation. Couple of weeks ago, former counselor Jim Sheridan sat down with me, and we talked for a while, mostly he talked and I listened, and I'm afraid I may not have done everything that he suggested I might do, but I really appreciated the conversation. I really look forward to continuing it into the new year, so feel free to show up anytime. 8:30 to 9:30 every Thursday at Baggy Dose.
Okay, a couple of things. First, big props to Sheila and John Odom for all the work they're doing on the charter change advocacy there. There have been regular meetings with Roberta, who you've seen a couple of times here. They're putting together a really good game plan. Committee assignments were released today for the House, so we all have to be really nice to Representative Sarah Copeland-Hanzus, who's the new Chair of Government Operations. And I think the new makeup is more favorable than the previous makeup of the committee. Hopefully, get some of these charter changes through. Along those lines, I don't know who sets the agenda for the legislative welcome reception, but I do believe if we're hosting this and investing in this, we should devote some time for a couple of minutes for folks to talk about both the bag ban and the non-U.S. citizen voting change there. You know, if they're gonna enjoy themselves, they have to be subjected to listening to us too for a bit. So, I'd make the point to that. And then I sent around just the RFP for the child care for the city of Pittsburgh, which I think gives some good indications, and might be just a seed of developing a policy for us with our $2,000 that we're hopefully working with for child care. But Tiffany Semenow, who works for the mayor's office in Pittsburgh, said she'd be more than happy to be hands-on on this and help us develop an approach that fits Montpelier, so that's it for me. Thanks.
Actually, have you been to one of the Welcome Back legislators? I've gone for years, both as a council member and as, when I was in public transportation, and they're never quiet. I think it, I mean, maybe, I think it's true, we need to really assess, what is that event? What is it worth? But I do want to go back to Jack's comment about the French block, and it was just wonderful. And really, kudos for the housing, all those who involved in it, and that they kept some of the really quirky, unique features of the building, archways, just, it was wonderful. But I'll tell you, everybody was looking at the kitchen cabinets. I mean, I got in more conversations with people, oh, I want that many cabinets at my house. Because it was such a wonderful use of space. It really was delightful. Thank you.
I don't have anything to add, so I'm gonna pass.
Just a couple of things. Also, congratulations for French Block, really fabulous moment for the city and for those things. And there's one who looks out the window at the building, it's nice to see some activity. Just want to comment quickly about the recent appeal of the DRB decisions on the farmer, on the parking garage. Did speak with our attorneys today, and we are advised to limit our comments because we are in active litigation, so anything that you have, please refer to the mayor or me through that, and so, we'll probably have more of a statement at some point. But I would say that we need to think about this to the extent that it delays or creates problems for our project, because we have a lot of other projects that are somewhat dependent on it. This discussion of what they call Confluence East was solely due to the fact that we were gonna have more parking, and some of the other discussions about bike lanes and those kind of things were due to the fact that we're gonna have more parking. And so, I think we need to be thinking about the timing of all of those things. There's a ripple effect of these types of projects that, you know, may or may not have been what this group of people intended when they moved forward, but it's...
Okay. All right, so, was there, Ashley, did you want to say something?
I see two representatives from the Social and Economic Justice Committee here. I think we were supposed to be on the agenda tonight, but I dropped the ball and didn't get the information to Bill that I was supposed to, and so, I wasn't sure if either of you wanted to address the council just briefly, or if there was anything that you wanted to, I apologize that it's out of turn.
It's okay.
And Bill did mention to me that they were here, and I...
Great. And then, and then we'll be done.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Yeah, yeah.
Hi, I'm Julia Shapitz, one of the co-chairs of the committee.
I'm still Michael Sherman.
So, I have, we have not come before you, you may have noticed, to present a charge, and I think that that is an important piece of what, the work that we are needing to do and struggling with at the moment. I have, over the last couple of weeks, I've met with, I've met with five of the seven current members individually to talk about that and what that might look like, and I have a draft here that I'd be happy to, I don't know if now is the appropriate time to share it. Oh, I didn't keep my copy for myself.
Send one back.
Oh, look at that. Very prepared, thank you. It strikes me as I, as I listened tonight, that every single issue that you discussed tonight, and probably ever discuss, has implications for social and economic justice, and I think that is a piece of the struggle. I think that's a piece of why we've been having a hard time getting going on this. And one of the things that's been, that's cleared me both in my background and working with groups of people, as well as with this particular group, that, that having a clear purpose is gonna be part of what propels us forward into action. And so, I think we're needing some guidance from the city council, but this is our start. I think clarity and specificity about what we do will be really key. So, I would love your comments. Do you have anything you wanted to add to what I said?
I think we just are struggling because we didn't really get a sense from the beginning of what the council was asking of us. And, you know, the word advisory in the title is kind of vague, although advise you about what? And I think for some of us, the question is, are we, are we there to receive specific requests from you, or are we supposed to take a more proactive role in going out and sort of looking at questions of social and economic justice, which I will say is a bottomless well. And that, and that is a problem. And even the two requests that we think we have throw us into an area of expertise that few of us have, and so, we, this, any request is going to require us to do research or, and/or bring in people who know more about it than any of us, or most of us on that committee. And so, this is a real, this is a real important question. What is it, what is your expectation of how, of what we're gonna be doing, so that we at least have some sense of boundaries?
To my sense right now, and happy to be wrong about this, but I would love to take this and digest it and talk about it again on the, either the 24th or the next meeting, depending on when we have time. The 24th is already, last I looked, it was really full, but it, but this might, either we can fit it in, or it's soon thereafter. How do you feel about that, team?
I agree.
Yeah, I would say, trying to think what our next meeting in February is...
It's February, it's like, no, it's January 15th.
Oh.
Yeah.
So...
So, we wouldn't be meeting before then, anyway.
Right. And so, in February, it's the...
So, it was the third?
The third, third Tuesday.
Third Tuesday.
So, we'd be meeting the second Wednesday, so we'd be meeting on the 13th of February, so that would be in advance of the...
I think that makes, I think that would work.
Oh, thank you, Todd. Oh, yes, look at that. Oh.
Let's get up to date.
We're like woefully behind. It's like being home. Uh-oh, uh-oh. That one's going.
We're still not in February. Oh, did we get the wrong year?
We don't even get to February. I mean, to be fair...
I think, I think that's, our February meeting is still before the next committee meeting in February, so...
Yeah, except for the January.
So, that would mean that, that we really would not be able, we wouldn't know whether we're supposed to go forward, for example, on the ordinance that you're talking about on the living level wage.
By your next meeting, you mean?
Because we were told that you wanted something from us in March.
Right, but that, but we could work with that. I don't think, that was an initial goal, but some of these are dragging.
That's okay.
Our first meeting in February is the 13th, and then the second is the 27th.
I'm sorry, I just... Is, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I'm understanding, are you saying that for your January meeting, which is between now and the 24th, you may still be in the same situation of not knowing what to do, and that's the problem?
I, I think that's true, but I also think we have this now, which is more than we've had. And I think there are, I think there are things that can happen. I mean, I, I think there are things that, that...
Yeah, I mean, I would trust you all to figure that out between, well, let me rephrase. I, I think either continuing to work on that ordinance, or operating under this, these guidelines would be fine until, until then. Does that seem, I don't know if that would be helpful?
I mean, I, I mean, in my personal view, I think it's, it's more helpful that there be a thoughtful process around what our purpose is. So, I think the fact that, that you all took, take the time to talk about it is more important than you deciding something right now.
Well, and, and if in the interim, if it makes more sense for you to cancel your January meeting and just pick up again in February, then, you know, that could happen too. I mean, up to you, whatever you...
We're not scheduling your meetings.
Is there anything that, I mean, is there anything that, I guess, I don't know what my question is, is there anything that any of you would like us to know about? I'm struggling, I'm, I'm so new to working within city government. I would love guidance on how should we be working with the City Manager's Office? How should we be working with each of you individually as counselors? What specific kinds, kinds, any just like thoughts that you have now about how we can be helpful to you?
So, I would add, unless, Donna, you, you go ahead.
I was going to say, go ahead.
Okay. I would say, usually for other committees, we often have council rep, and so usually it's, you know, you would go through the council rep to either communicate about issues that might be relevant, or questions that are unresolved, that you could use some advice about, or, you know, in terms of direction, are we going in the right direction? That usually is relayed through your city counselor. That is also to say that there's nothing preventing you from, you know, talking with the rest of us, obviously. I'm trying to think if there's anything else.
And we have had manager's office staff attending your meetings, although she probably won't be there this week.
Right, so, yeah.
But, yeah, so try to support that as much as we can, and certainly happen to talk about any of that.
Donna?
I think also, one of your issues comes back to...
Don't ask, speak into your mic.
Comes back to the council, and that is, we haven't really talked about it. It seems to me, three years ago, when none of these people were like half, when only Ann and I were here, were the remains of three years ago, and we talked about it, and even when we did the Black Lives Matter resolution, in my mind, one of the kickoffs was really having awareness workshops for the council, for the committee, for the community, so we could start really generating a mindset before we tried to start implementing policies. So, and I may be the only one there, but, see, we haven't had our conversation with this council, so you're a good reminder that we have to do our work in order to help you do your work.
Thank you.
So, thank you for coming and going to all the meetings and doing what you have done. The conversations there are good.
Glenn?
I'm new too. I still feel new, anyway, as Donna pointed out just now. And I don't know if it would be helpful, but it was interesting, Michael, to, to think about the word advisory, advisory committee, and it might make sense to talk with my partner, Kate, of the Energy Advisory Committee, and, and how she has, and, and that committee has structured itself to kind of, in the way that you were describing earlier, is the committee there to answer specific questions that the council asks, or is the committee there to explore new policies? And I think that Kate would say both, and in these specific ways over the last few years. So, you might sit down with her and get some structure out of that.
That's on my to-do list, actually. Thank you.
There are different models. For example, there, there is the Vermont Advisory Committee to the US Civil Rights Commission, and they have always taken on independent studies based on, I guess, issues that arise. And then there are advisory committees where you get a very specific charge. We're, we're looking at this issue, what, you know, what should we be thinking about? What are the things that you see that we may not be seeing? And those, those are different models, and it would be helpful to know which, which, if either of those models you had in mind. And if you're going to say both, well, then, all right, we, you know, we would then have to be prepared, but it's a big, that's asking a lot of people who don't necessarily have expertise in some of these issues.
And I think that's, you know, just from having watched, whether it was the Energy Committee or the Housing Task Force and others over the years that have taken on certain topics, I don't think there's anything wrong either with saying, that's, that's over our head, you know, thanks, but, you know, this, this is the opinion, the collective opinion of the people on this board, but we, we don't have the expertise to delve into this any further, or, or we would need more support to really give you any good advice. I, I, there's, you know, as you say, there's a never-ending well of these topics that we could talk about, and, and...
And there are lots of ways to get at it, too.
Right. And, you know, I listen, I mean, I'm not a voting member here, but I, you know, I was listening when this was formed, and I think there was a sense that there might be certain things that the council would refer and say, hey, we'd like your way in on this before we approve it. There was also a sense that there would be some community engagement that you might initiate and say, you know, we'd like to do these workshops, we'd like to do these whatever forums, or, or, you know, however you set that up. And that there might be things that you see, you know, for example, just, you know, we're going about our, the City Council and city staff have a zillion things going on, and so there's, could be an opportunity for somebody, whoa, have you thought about, you know, I see that you're just barreling along with scooters, or, you know, whatever, just using it as a, for instance, but, you know, have you given any thought to that impact on this community by doing that? And, you know, timeout, or at least as you, you know, so I think all, all of that could be really helpful, and just maybe your agendas are sort of, you know, what's, what's our project, what's our forum, what's our, is there anything we want to weigh in on, type thing? You know, or split up work amongst individual members and come together. What do I know?
What do you know?
So, the one further thing I would say is, could you send this to us electronically?
Yes.
That would be great.
Yep. What's the best, do I send it to you? Should I send it to you?
There you go. Okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and...
Squeezing us in.
Well, yeah, no problem. And with that, we are going to, without objection, adjourn.
We made it before 9:30.
Yeah.